Remember which year this was, it changes a little bit every year.
This is the FY21 timeline, so these are all FY21 dates.
Yep. So in the, on a great year, a year where everything's going smoothly, that June 11th date might be May. Uh, in this case, for fiscal 21, which is what we're in right now. So this was June of 2020. Things were a little crazy. It was pushing a little later. The manager presents their budget to the mayor. The mayor then, under the charter, has 14 days to make changes. We've had years where the mayor delivered his or her budget, so far only his, for the executive mayor, his budget in one day. And we've had other years where the mayor took all 14 days to make his own changes. Finally, it gets to council. At this point, it's been through the manager, it's been through the mayor, council gets it, and really, that's when it gets shared to the public. Uh, from there, Lauren will talk through the wild ending to the city budget passage.
Um, then council deliberates, um, and you know, everybody's pushing for their priorities. Um, we'll show you that in a little bit. Um, but yeah, we just talk about it and we all say, this is what we want, this is what we don't want. And we have public budget hearings, so the public can come and give their input. We normally try to do those um, in a bunch of different neighborhoods in the city. Um, and then the budget has to be passed by June 30th, um, by law, so. You can do next slide, Hilly.
So, as Lauren was saying, in a non-COVID year, the city will usually schedule three to five budget hearings. This is after the mayor and the manager have made their proposed budget, once it's been given to council. Yeah, on a great year, we like to do maybe one up in Bond Hill, one out in Westwood, one out in Madisonville, one downtown, another one throughout the city. 2020, with COVID restrictions to spread everybody out, we did all of them in the Duke Energy Center. They were packed, uh, and around six feet between every chair, which is why the Duke Energy Center became one of the only places in the city we could pull that off. When it comes to the public making their case, what we've seen is when you have a large group of people consistently on message, 30 to 40 each day, telling their story, advocating for their group, you'll really start to see some impact and traction. Say it's something that nobody at City Hall had really been talking about. Uh, and all of a sudden, everybody's coming in. Maybe it's one neighborhood that's chosen a topic that matters a lot to them. And at every meeting, there are people saying, Madisonville needs blank, we need your help, please help us out, we need this investment. That will gain traction and it will really, council members will start to say, hey, this, this subject has been loud, people are caring about this. How can we try to fit it in? And that's when the details go in. Next slide, please, Hilly.
So this is just, um, there's the operating budget, and then there's the capital budget, and we'll dig into those a little bit more. But those two can combine, make up the total budget, which is about 1.3 billion dollars. So there's a lot of money, um, that the city of Cincinnati is working with. So this is just-
About 900 million, somewhere in the 800 to 900 million range of that 1.3 billion is water and sewer. I think it's maybe closer to 800. Um, the water and sewer, which are paid for by rates, as opposed to taxes, uh, make up the largest portion. But if you look in the bottom left corner of the blue circle, you'll see what says general fund operating. That's around $400 million that pays police, fire, parks, public services, transportation, uh, rec centers, health, the things that we generally think of as like the city. Uh, and so it's that chunk there that often has the most discussion and deliberation during budget time.
You can do next slide, Hilly. So this is kind of small, so you might not be able to see it right now, uh, but when you get the slides later, this is just a breakdown of the all funds budget. So it was, so we do biannual budget, so we pass two budgets, but then one year we just update one. So it has what it was, the 2021 biannual budget, and then it has the approved, and then it has the FY21 approved. Um, so like I said, the numbers are really small right now, but you can take a look at it later, um, and really dig into it. Go ahead, Hilly.
The operating process, uh, the city budget process covers these chunks of budgets. We hadn't mentioned the capital yet. Capital budget is going to be everything that's built legally. I think the definition is things that last five years or more. So capital dollars are our streets, our buildings, you know, these permanent improvements. We've got our restricted funds, which have a lot more rules. Often they're tied to specific revenue sources. So say sewer comes directly from the ratepayers, things along those lines. The Parks Department and the Health Department both have a lot of really specific funds. For parks, it's endowments, uh, from donors, those endowments are tied to a usage. And for, uh, uh, Health Department, it's a lot of billing, Medicaid, et cetera. And so council doesn't really touch those much at all. Uh, it's really these, this general fund that is the biggest portion. And then the last thing, what we call the leveraged support fund, that is a big grouping of dollars that is money that the city is giving to mostly nonprofits and other institutions that they use as a major part of their own annual funding. Uh, something you can think of, uh, Lauren, there may be some that come off the top of your head, but I-
Yeah, so, um, like Cincy Tech, um, and what they do is for every dollar the city gives them, the state also gives them a dollar. So that's why so many, so many times you'll hear us say, we need to provide some of the economic development, I'm madam president.
Yes, that was madam president.
Um, sometimes you'll hear us say, like, our office was often like, yes, we want to fully support the economic development because if we take a dollar from them, that's actually $2 that they're losing because they're losing the state match. So that's just one way that some people leverage the money that they get from the city to-
A large number of the human services entities are under this leveraged support fund as well.
Um, next slide, Hilly. Um, so this is just a breakdown of the general fund revenues that transfers in. Um, so this is where all the money comes from. As you can see, most of the money comes from the earnings tax. And we pulled this from the FY21 budget, which has a lot of CARES Act funding, we got a lot of that. So, um, that is something that's not normally in the typical budget. So I put that little asterisk there, just so you know, it's not normal.
Yeah, I think when people see this, it shows the city is really heavily reliant on one revenue stream. Uh, that is never ideal, and it is something that annually, the rating agencies that come down and check on every city uh, for debt ratings, they, they do point out that the city is heavily reliant on earnings tax. And the challenge there is that the first thing to go during a recession is someone's job. The day their job stops, they immediately stop paying into the city's earnings tax. You may still have a mortgage that you have to pay, and so you're still paying your property taxes, but you're not paying your income tax anymore. Once you've lost your job, the city is hit hard and immediately in recessions because of this, uh, uneven balance of revenue streams. You can go to the next one, Hilly.
And this is just, um, expenditures out. Like I said, Hilly's gonna send these out, so if you really want to dig into the numbers later, you're more than welcome to do that. This is just like a brief overview. But as you can see, most of our expenses are actually public safety, which is fire and police.
Yeah, this is something that I think you'll, almost all, with just a little bit of research, be aware of. It is a controversial topic. It's true in most mid-sized urban cities that police and fire, which are what make up public safety, NEMS and 911, uh, are the largest portion of the budget. And it's, obviously it was a huge part of the discussion during the civil unrest and defund the police discussions last summer. Uh, it is a consistent discussion point about how the city, uh, prioritizes its money. If public safety is that 65%, you can see down to public services, cleaning our streets, taking our trash is 3.5%. Uh, a large part of the budget, I think the number's approximately 90% is salaries. And so when you look at this, you can see that our salaries, our most highest employees, when you combine them, are in that, uh, public safety division.
Yeah, if you go to the next slide, um, that's a salary breakdown. So it's, um, the general fund personnel versus non-personnel. So 83.7% of the general fund is going to personnel, the other percentage is like equipment. Um, and then general late, general fund employee labor representation, that's broken down by the union. So you can see at the, um, FOP, which is the police union, has the biggest, then the firefighters. And it's really important to note, John can talk a little bit more about this because he knows more, uh, the labor contract negotiations, like how much people in unions are paid, takes place separate from the actual budget system.
Yeah, in terms of agreements that include merit increases, uh, say the manager will directly negotiate with a, with a union to set their next three years of increases. Maybe it's three, three and two over the next three years, or five, five and four. Um, council then does not have much option on the actual increases. However, council does get the final decision on staffing. Um, so there have frequently been years when budgets are incredibly tight, primarily the immediately after the 2008 recession. So there's like nine, 10, 11 years where layoffs seem to be on the table uh, due to budget cuts. But it's this unique balance of the manager negotiates a contract that says how much the people get paid. Um, and then it's up to council and the citizens through that input to determine where should we prioritize the amount of staff in our city. Ask me is our, you know, truly the city's workforce of public services and other divisions like that. Code is, uh, managers, it's mostly going to be engineers and transportation. And then non-represented is folks like Lauren and I, who are not in the union, and then also the Lot Department and other sort of managerial divisions.
Um, next slide, Hilly. So like we were saying, this is just the capital fund. Um, we will be sending this out afterwards, so we're going to go quickly through the capital fund revenues and, um, expenditures. You can dig into those. There's also links to the whole entire budget at the end of this. But you can just kind of see, um, where some of the money is coming from and where's it, where it is going.
The Southern Railroad note, just sounds very strange. Uh, the city of Cincinnati, you may have heard, owns a railroad. It goes from downtown Cincinnati to Chattanooga, Tennessee. It is fully owned by the city and leased to, oh, Norfolk Southern, I believe, one of the other railroads. And they pay us, uh, I think it's around, I'm just off the top of my head, like $25 million a year, uh, that we use to back debt, um, building, construction, capital expenses, you know, fixing roads, you name it. And it is an unbelievable asset that is so unique for a city to own, but in the 1800s, some city leaders decided it was a good idea. Think if they built it to Atlanta, it'd be worth even more, but they went to Chattanooga and it does bring in a huge amount of money for the city every year.
Next slide, Hilly. Um, like I said, these are general fund expenditures, so you can go to next slide. Okay, so this is on this side, this is a leveraged support. It's just all the different programs are part of the leveraged support, and that's in there as an example because the budget is not one big yes or no. So, um, it's, there's a bunch of little changes that take place and, um, we vote on those, it goes into an omnibus and we vote on that.
When, when we think of the budget, it's, oh, did you vote yes or no on the budget? Is a question that might come to mind for a council member. At the end of the day, the budget's about 15 different votes. Uh, and so a council member might vote yes on nine and no on six, you know, it just depends on their priorities, how they feel at the time. And when it comes to those council changes, truly, I, I think Lauren and I went back over several years to try to gauge how much on an average year do council members change out of the $400 million general fund budget? Numbers between like two and five million on a regular year that we change, the council changes. So that's a little over 1%, a little under 1% of the full city budget that gets changed at the end. So when we think of our budget, the mayor and the manager, primarily the manager, bakes about 98% of the budget. And when it comes to city council, those changes, which can be incredibly impactful, are still only a small portion of the budget. Uh, here in this example, you see some really important groups that have been funded, some for a number of years, some for just a few years. The African-American Chamber of Con, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Lauren already mentioned Cincy Tech, groups like Centrifuse. And then down in the Human Services Fund, you've got unbelievable organizations that I know Gina will talk about, who through advocacy, make an impact every year.
Um, next slide, Hilly. So this is, um, our budget, this is the FY19 budget cheat sheet that, um, our office, Amy Murray, used. So like we said, um, first the manager has it, and then the mayor makes changes, and then all the council members make changes, which can get very confusing. So this is how we use to keep track of everything, um, you know, what changes were happening. And I think it's really important to note, um, when you want to add something into the budget, you have to have a revenue source tied to it. So I know, um, one year I wanted mortar to get an extra $35,000 to start up, um, their program in Walnut Hills. But I couldn't just say, oh, I want this. Um, I had to come up with a revenue source. So that's always very important.
And that means a cut from somewhere else, or something new, either really pulling a rabbit out of your hat, or generally taxes or fees are the only other option. And so it is, when the budget arrives so baked, uh, it does take a lot of really deep dives and hard work to make the changes that you want to see. Just as this one example, and I know we're almost done. Um, the second column is a Silbok and Mann motion, a budget change proposed by Councilmember Mann and Councilmember Silbok, uh, that Joanna and I worked on together at the time. And you see some big priorities. Uh, $800,000 to the Human Services Fund. Um, additional funding for the winter shelter, which adds, I think, three more weeks of winter shelter service. Um, restoring the Neighborhood Support Fund and funding an addiction treatment program of the cat house, so they could do an expansion. We had to, we wanted those priorities, they're big priorities. How do we do it? And so we proposed holding the, the police recruit class for two months. Just wait, you were going to start in April, start in June. That has a delay that has a financial impact. Those discussions then, say two council members agree, can you get to five? And what trade-offs have to happen? This is a beautiful chart that Amy's office used to work on, uh, that shows everyone's different way of trying to make that magic happen.
Yeah, um, and then we're wrapped up. So this last slide, Joanna was in charge of the budget, she was this organizer, she's being very nice. Um, the last slide is just a lot of helpful, um, resources. You know, you can go read the whole 500-page Cincinnati budget. I highly recommend pulling in All Nighter. That's when, 3 o'clock AM is where you find this money. Um, and then like the brief and past budgets and council engagement. So everything you need to know about the Cincinnati budget are in those links.
We could go on a lot longer.
Yeah, we're nerdy.
Dive into details, uh, but we have to stop now, and I do know there'll be some time for question and answer, which we are happy to dive in on.
Thank you guys so much. That was awesome. I really love that. Um, having those visual resources are, it's so great. So next, I'm going to introduce, um, if I can find, there we go. Our next two speakers are Gina Marsh and Elizabeth Bartley. Gina Marsh serves as the Executive Director of the Human Services Chamber, managing its daily operations and its strategy for developing and advocating for public policies that benefit the Human Services Chamber and the clients and customers they serve. Prior to her work with HSC, Gina served in a variety of roles with the city of Cincinnati, where she learned how to navigate the politics and processes of local government. As an attorney for the city, she worked with council members, the mayor, and city manager and department heads to craft legislation and rules implementing operational and policy priorities. Gina also formed working relationships with multiple community leaders and organizations in her role, leading a council office. And Elizabeth Bartley is a returned Cincinnatian, currently residing in Walnut Hills. She served on the Invest in Neighborhoods Board of Trustees for four years as Assistant Secretary in Treasurer, and has been Chair of the Neighborhood Summit since 2015. Elizabeth's committee work on behalf of Invest in Neighborhoods includes Member of the Core Team, All in Cincinnati, the Managers Advisory Group, Education and Training Subcommittee, the Property Tax Work Group, and Housing Strategy Work Group, LISC. Both Gina and Elizabeth have a long track record of advocating for funds in the city's budget process very successfully. They are a fountain of knowledge and I'm excited for them to share. So take it away.
Thank you, Gina. I don't, do you want to, who's, who's going first here? Um, are you set up to go, Gina? Or I'll go. I guess I'm going.
I, I'm unmuted now. I, I, or you can go, whichever one.
I, well, mine is going to be shorter because those guys covered so much of one part of what I was going to do, which actually is awesome because that gives us more time for Q and A later. Um, hopefully I can share this properly. It's always, um, I need the host to do my screen sharing. You have to let me, uh, screen share.
Done.
Done? Okay, awesome. Ah, ba-ba-ba-boom. So can you guys see this?
Yep, yep, we sure can.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so yes, the, uh, the key to so much, so I'm going to say with my background, by the way, honestly, if I'd known you were going to read out that really, really old bio, I would have sent you something updated that sounded a lot more interesting like Gina's. Um, I have no background in advocacy and organizing prior to being in my career. Uh, so this is, this was all new and I had to learn so much. So I really appreciate that, um, what Lauren and John went through, because I think one of the key pieces of um, advocating and organizing to advocate around anything, but you know, we are talking the budget, which is complicated, is knowledge. It's really important to actually know how this works and know what the processes and everything they went through. So we can skip a whole bunch of slides, which is really cool. Um, there we go. So they went over all of that. Where does the money come from and how is it advocated? Um, where a lot of their information and where you can find more for those who are nerdy enough that they really do want to go through all this is on the, um, in the finance slash budget of the city website. They have multiple presentations and all the budgets from the last few years, so it's a great resource. There we go, so we can get that, we can skip that. This is fun. We can skip that. I will reemphasize that point though. What the city council is talking about and what we are all looking at in June is a really teeny tiny portion of the budget. And there is so much that's baked in for a variety of reasons, a variety of complicated reasons that aren't going to shift and aren't going to change. That it's, you know, even, even in the area that we are all looking at, as you were saying, what was it, like 1% change from year to year in how things are allocated. So I will reemphasize that point, and they did bring that we are talking about leveraged support with, are the, the big bucket areas that we're talking about, but it's not really a lot of money when you look at it in terms of the overall budget. So that was it. They did the whole thing there. So reference their, their, um, report that they, they're going to share, and I'm going to share this later too. And if you want to dig into more detail, you can go into, um, the city's website. Now, I'm taking this from slightly, it's the same thing and slightly different than what they were talking about in terms of the schedules. Why I call it budget season. That many people think about the budget as just the thing that happens in June. And you have multiple groups here that I outlined. You have what is going on in the city manager's office and on the administrative side, what happens on city council side? And then, you know, the action, what's the community side of this? And when should things start? And how, how do you map this out? But understanding this process from the city manager's office, the administrative point of view is also key to this knowledge base. Because you should be paying attention throughout the whole thing and starting to get a feel for where things are going. So I just have it shown out here. We have, you know, departments deliver their reports, there's the tax budget forecast that you already mentioned. Find, keep an eye, and this is a generic schedule that I pulled from several years, so they were showing last year's, but it's all kind of within this range. Um, the, uh, Chris Biggum presents every year a budget preview to council, and that's really important. That's where we're starting to get this, since, um, it's going to be scary. Is it going to be, you know, like last year, it was all terrifyingly scary. There's no money, everything's done, it's all over. Uh, but it's important to know what that preview is because there's been a ton of work done on the administrative side behind this so that they can get a feel for, um, understanding what the budget landscape is going to look like. So then we have the, somewhere in this, there is usually a public presentation about the budget process. It's been done in multiple ways for several years. And again, you can find those presentations online where we've, you know, we've done it at the summit several years because March is a good time to do this. Um, but somewhere in February and March, there is usually a public presentation that goes over the breakdown that these guys were talking about and how this works. And it's just really informative and the numbers are always for this year. This is kind of what we're looking at and what we're thinking of and how it works. Now, in April, there's this, these tax receipts review that come in, and this is that earning tax. And so when you're talking about this split between the earning tax and everything else, which is tiny, tiny, this becomes really important. And this is, this year, this is really critically important because we don't know yet how the tax revenues have been impacted by all the COVID-19 shuts down, the remote working, everything else. So that is actually going to be very significant this year. And if the large companies manage to do well, like let's pretend for a minute we had Amazon headquartered here, right? They've done phenomenally well during this, uh, situation we're all in. That would be marvelous, right? But we don't know yet. But that's going to be a really important point to look for, um, this year is, is when that happens in, in getting that feel for how, you know, here's the budget preview, is it going to be better or is it going to be worse? Then this thing about the manager's budget being delivered, he's taken all this information, looked at all this stuff, looked at all the departments, everybody's crunching numbers all over the place, and then the manager delivers his budget. So that's on the administrative side. With city council, in addition to, again, the, the process, they were talking about it towards the end, when the city does their deliberations on those pieces and their 15, 16 votes that have to happen and how that all works. And thank you for unpacking that. Um, early on, the city council sets their budget priorities. And they vote on this, they set these priorities, and they send it over to the city manager. And that is delivered over there prior to when the manager's budget is delivered. But again, this is one of those things that it's a good piece of knowledge to have to watch out for, to understand that this is part of the whole process. Then, as they mentioned, the mayor's, uh, has his 14 days, was, maybe I'm including the day that's delivered, the 15 days for the reconciliation between the manager and mayor's budget. And then after that are the city council deliberations and the public hearings. Okay, so we have a general sense of the landscape and key points that I think it's important to pay attention to. And so this is, if you're looking at the action side and, and how I have to look at this is I am at an organization of limited staffing, okay? And what we do is we help a whole bunch of organizations, right? So we've got all these community councils. There's 46 active community councils right now that are all volunteers. And they don't have staff, they don't have time, they don't have bandwidth. And one of the big key things, and this is sort of where we developed our approach to this, is we cannot assume that we can mobilize a whole bunch of bodies in big bright colored t-shirts, I'm very jealous of that, to show up at the public hearings. Because these are volunteers that have lives and commitments and things like that. And we just don't have that, that same ability. Um, I mean, I keep hoping that someday we're going to just be able to do that. But if that's not necessarily an approach, how else are we going to do this? So these action items start coming in when I start thinking about, we said, get the, that it was important to get the city talking about it. That was the idea with, you know, the public hearings and lots of people showing up, is that you're getting the city to talk about this. Well, we kind of work on a strategy of getting the city to start talking about it way earlier. Being aware of these processes that are going on, on the administrative side, on the city council side, and start engaging conversations early, okay? So watching out for that, that budget preview to council, so you have the knowledge. It's really important to use this knowledge to start building your messages and building out your support. Um, communicate your priorities to city council before they do their priorities. Submit your information- communicate your priorities to city council before they do their priorities, submit your information. These are our priorities. My group, my universe, my whatever we're advocating for, these are our priorities and get those in there and communicate that to city council before they do their budget priorities. You know, that's, that's first flag. Hey, this is important to us. You know, we hope it's important to you. Watch for those updates on the tax receipts because again, that's gonna give a feeling of what the landscape is going to start looking like when it starts getting down to it. You, is it gonna be better than we thought? Is it gonna be worse than we thought? That's gonna help determine some flexibility. Um, within the, here's this, here's that limited universe we're working in. Um, but I think that's an important knowledge to have. Go ahead and communicate your ask and your priorities to the city manager's office at, you know, before the city manager delivers their budget. Start getting a sense of these things. Being aware, again, knowledge is your power, not understanding how you fit into the budget process and where your group is and what your interests are. You know, having that knowledge helps you communicate better to the city manager, whose job is very, very different than city council and the mayor. I mean, he literally is, they have to have this balanced budget. It's operational, it's business focused, okay? But it helps if you understand how you fit into that puzzle to be able to start communicating and working with people. Um, manager delivers his budget, go ahead and then communicate your priorities to the mayor. If either, either say, we're really happy to see that we're in here at this amount and thank you very much. And dear Mr. Mayor, we hope you will keep us in there. Or if you're not, then dear Mr. Mayor, we would really like to see this in here. It's all communication all the way through. Um, and then after the mayor does his, that is your communicating and you're asking your priorities to city council member, you know, and, and constantly doing this. And what I'm saying communicating, I'll get into this in a second. I am also gonna say, working with the aides is great. Working with the actual offices is great because that, that was a beautiful deck that you were showing, that the one where, oh, look at that, you know, here it is. And then what has to go? Because for every increase here, there has to be a cut somewhere else. And if you're thinking along those levels as well, if you're understanding that, then it becomes a better working relationship. Like, we want this. And you know what? We think maybe you could actually look at over here, a 1% reduction. And that actually becomes just a much better, meaningful conversations to have, which again, continue to refine what your ask is and how you're working on this. Okay, I keep that actions communicate. I'm using, using this in big vague way. So what does that mean concretely? People forget about our, all, all these different ways we can communicate. Again, everybody comes to focus on those, on those, um, public hearings. Present at the committees prior to the city council meetings. Budget and finance, neighborhood committee, whatever the relevant committee is. Go there, start going there, January, February, March. Putting your case floor, even if it's just at the beginning, it's just a large, hey, don't forget about us and all the good work we do. Having those presentations, working with those, and then presenting those priorities and getting support from your subcommit, from the subcommittees. All of those people that are on the subcommittees are also on the final voting council, right? So work with the subcommittees. Um, so then your phone calls and I put the VM to remind people that you can leave a voicemail, right? It's not like, I'm not always talking about direct communication. You can leave a voicemail. Writing letters as emails, email or separate letters. Some people do that. Doing petitions. Um, once the city gets used to seeing petitions coming from particular organizations, I mean, it took us a while to be like, no, no, when we give you this petition, it's not invest talking. It's the 127 people side. Um, but it is, it is effective, the face to face, if you can. If I face to face, I put it in quotes because we got Zoom. And actually, I did mean also conversations on the phone, the actual conversation, not leaving a voicemail. Start those ways of communicating. Remember, your goal is to get enough votes for your thing to be passed, but you have to have this knowledge base. You have to understand how you can be helpful in helping them achieve your goal by making suggestions. Um, all of this is way before the public hearings. And part of this, again, I'm coming from this point of view where I've got this really diverse, broad group of, you know, volunteer organizations. And, you know, it's always, it was said to me early on that, you know, the key is volume. Key is volume. If you could get, you know, 150 people in the room, we will listen to you. Well, what if you can't? Okay. Well, there's different kinds of volume, the forms of communication. You're communicating in a lot of different ways. You're getting that conversation going. You're letting it be known that the, these priorities and these are important to a lot of people. So using all these different forms of communications, all these paths for communicating, and then continuing to build out the number of people who are doing these various multiple forms of communications. And you're going to, especially if you're working with volunteers, you really need to work to their strengths. Because we do have some people who like, they're not gonna write an email, but they will pick up the phone all day long. They love to talk to people on the phone. There are people who, you know, love the petition thing. There are other people who really want to, um, actually have meetings or, you know, I mean, in, in understanding that, but then constantly building. So you don't just start, okay, we got 20 people and this is what you're gonna do. Like step one, we got maybe three people. Step two, we've got, you know, you just, you keep building your volume in different ways. The forms of volume of communication and the numbers of people that are using that, all of these different avenues. So that is to me, is how we get to this volume when you're not necessarily just able to say, everybody's gonna show up at the public hearing. Consistency is key. I'm, I'm sure the current staff and former staff in the room can tell you, when you get flooded with a lot of stuff, it's really important for them to very quickly know what this subject is. Who's the group, what's subject? So as you're working with other people, as you're working on, you know, organizing and building up this advocacy, this consistency is really, really key. So we actually give people, use this as your subject line. So it's like boom, right there in the email or whatever form we're communicating with. That's the first thing you say in your voicemail. We provide templates for emails where they can just use that as their letter or modify it as the letter. We provide key talking points for phone calls. We actually provide key talking points for the, you know, committees and for public hearings, whatever people need. This is another thing, why I'm back to this like budget season, use the budget season, this whole process and this whole understanding to craft your message. You start with your high level priorities. And then you start getting this feel for what's possible, what's not possible. You start understanding the current climate. And then align your messaging with the city council priorities. Like, it just seems to me, it's really logical thing to do. It's like, oh, look, they said this really nice thing about neighborhoods. So hey, this thing we're asking for is going to be supportive of what you're saying is a priority for the neighborhoods. So crafting that, refining it, but keep consistent with everybody that's involved. Try to get that consistency across the board. I put in this last little piece, um, because I think that's a hard lesson learned sometimes. Don't just ask the same things in the exact same way every single year. It really does start falling on deaf ears. Not that you're not asking for the same thing, like, okay, yes, I have to go in and I have to ask for support or invest in neighborhoods every single year. But I'm not just gonna be like, hey, be again, just asking, yeah, you know, just file that one away. It's important that I can actually connect to where the world is right now. Where the world of the city or local government is right now and how this support that I'm asking for this year is connecting to that and how, you know, no organization is static anyway. So how, how we are moving forward is also aligning with how the city's priorities are moving forward. I think that is much more successful than just recycling last year's letter or recycling last year's talking. Because there isn't anything that said it. It also makes people feel that you're not aware of what's going on in the city side with real people, real issues, complexities. This is how the budget works. These are how the changes make. And, and you just seem really tone deaf to that. So that was what I kind of put in a little extra as I was thinking about it.
Elizabeth.
So that's it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I want to make sure we have some time for Gina and, uh, Q and A. So thank you very much for that very informative session.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, John, Elizabeth and Lauren for, um, that great, uh, informative presentation about the budget. I think what I'll do is just give some examples of how we've used advocacy successfully. As Hilly, uh, explained, I'm the executive director of the human services chamber. Uh, we are an association of over 70 human services, uh, organizations in Hamelin County. And our mission is to advocate and develop public policy that benefits, um, those that we serve. So, um, that includes housing, um, and, uh, public transit and of course, human services funding. Uh, there's really two examples I'd like to give you tonight of how we've, um, successfully advocated, uh, within the, the budget, uh, the city council budget. The first has to do with the human services city funding. So back in, excuse me, I've got a cold. Back in, uh, 2004 and prior to that for about two decades, the city had funded human services at 1.5% of the general fund budget, the operating budget. And then, uh, that dropped down to about 0.4%. Um, in 2004, I think it was. And that was a huge, huge cut for our human services organizations that rely on this funding. And so back in about 2017, the amount had crept up to about 0.8 at that point. And there is, there was always a lot of hand wringing every year. Organizations going down to, to ask city council, please give us more funding. We need more funding. And obviously that had not been a very successful strategy because there had not been a lot of gains between 2004, 2005 and all the way to 2017. So what we decided to do is say, hey, what if we proposed an ordinance? Not a motion, but an actual law that said, hey, we want to get back to 1.5% of the hu, of the general fund operating budget. But we want to do this over a series of years because we realize going straight from 0.08 to 1.5 was gonna be probably a really big chunk for the city budget. So what we did is we wrote an ordinance that said, hey, over these years, on this particular schedule, we would incrementally increase the human services funding budget to 1.5 by 2023. And so that, once, you know, that required the city every year to incrementally increase human services funding. So how did we do this? We, first of all, we wrote the ordinance and we came up with this strategy, which was really great because at that point, it's not asking the city to do any work. It's just asking city council to approve what we believe was already a great idea. So the first thing we had to do is we had to find a champion. And, um, you know, when you have a lot of really great city council members out there who may align with your values and what you're trying to promote, it's very difficult to do that. But at the time, council member Mann was the head of the budget and finance committee. And so it kind of made sense. Let's take this to him and let's see what he even thinks about this. Is it doable? Can the city do this? Do we have support? And we took it to him and he said, yes, let's do this. And he was able to actually go and work with his colleagues to come up with the support. Of course, we were behind the scenes as well. Um, talking to council members and this really happened over a period, I want to say like, I think the Thursday before the budget was gonna be passed on the following Wednesday is when we proposed that ordinance to council member Mann. So that is really, um, an example, um, of the advocacy that we've been able to do. And as a result, human services was about 3 million a year. Back in 2017, we're now up to 5 million at the 1.3% and will be up to 6 million, uh, or so, depending on what happens with the operating budget by the time we get to 2023. And so year over year, that has just been a huge, um, success, not only for our sector and the people that we serve, but I think also for the city council members who really were looking for a way to do this and, um, not have to sort of struggle with what can we do, you know, every year? How much can we wring out of the little bit of budget that we have to work with to, to fund human services? The other, uh, quick example I'll give you is, um, with eviction prevention. And so now everybody knows how important eviction prevention was, but back just about three years ago, no one was really talking about it in Cincinnati. And we knew from our members, um, it was a really important issue because a lot of people were getting evicted from their homes and there's such a connection to poverty from that. And so what we decided to do is to start calling attention to this problem. And we, we went to city council and we did a presentation. We weren't asking for any money at the time. We just wanted to make them aware of the problem, the connection to poverty, and also give them some ideas of, here are some policy ideas we have for how you could address the problem. And one was a rental assistance program. And so by the time budget came up next, the following year, they were already ready. They were primed. They're like, wow, this is a great idea. And so really the strategy from that one is don't wait until budget necessarily to start promoting your idea. You've got a whole year to start, you know, talking about the issues with your council members. Um, and so with those examples, I do want to share just about, oh, I have four strategies that I use and some of these have been covered tonight, but just real quickly. Number one, um, as an advocate, find your champion or champions on council. And you don't have to necessarily get all of the council members behind you. Start with two or three that you think will really be interested in what you're trying to do and see how they can help with getting the remainder of the support. Um, make it easy for them, like we did with the 1.5% ordinance. If you can write an ordinance or at least try, go onto council online, look at an ordinance and kind of use that as a sample and see if you can write your own. And whatever you can give to them, if it's a motion, if it's an ordinance, and, and the better developed it is, the better your chance of getting it, um, adopted is. Um, also, um, make whatever or information you give to them as brief as possible. If you hand them a single page, a single spaced four-page report, it probably will not get read. That's one thing I've learned, just because they are constantly barraged with so much information. So you really have to make it easy for them. Number three, mobilize. And Elizabeth talked a lot about this. You know, even though we have a schedule on the 1.5% ordinance, we do ask our members to come down every year and remind council of how important this is and the impact that this funding has on the lives of real people. And we ask them to tell a story of how this funding has actually helped people, um, to come out of poverty, to get a new job or, or whatever it is. And finally, I'll leave you with this, maintain good relationships with the council aides. And that really applies to those here tonight. And I will say, Ioana and John and Lauren, I mean, even though I've been at the city for a really long time, I could not do my job without having those relationships. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have time for a few questions. I know we have a few in the chat. I'm going to go through, let's see.
Hillary, I was gonna jump in with Ellen's question.
Hilly, I was going to jump in with Ellen's question. Is it normal for only two council members to put forth a joint motion? The graph that Lauren had in our slides was from 2020, summer of 2020. So that was the 2021 budget. That was a tough budget. It was the middle of a lot going on. COVID was crashing, you know, crushing our tax receipts. And we also had large discussions about how do we start to reprioritize, after hearing from a lot of folks, our public safety spending? And so you ended up with a more fractured first round of proposals. Normally, the goal on a great year would be that five council members or more can come up with the general agreements right away. That's ideal. At the end, a lot of those things that you saw that started with two or three people did end up with a majority of support, got blended together. But that was a tough year. And so people just said, look, I can get two people to agree to this. I'm going to start there and then continue the discussions.
Yeah, and I, Hilly, I'm sorry, I wanted to jump in about Sarah's question. I've been thinking about that. I will say, if you send a lot of template emails as a staffer, they do get very repetitive. We will open them all. But, you know, we're, send something unique, you know. If invest in neighborhoods is super important to you, add a personal story about why it's important to you. You know, don't just say, I think you should fund this. Be like, I think you should fund this because it helps me in this way. So I think that's one of the most important things to do is make your email unique.
I don't clarify my template because that's exactly part of my template. Is, you know, these are the key points, but you need to, why is this important to your council? Why is this important to you? You have to tell your story. So, I mean, so when I say templates, what, probably just a really high level version? But keeping that understanding of you absolutely need to talk about why this is important to you. Because that is what everyone needs to hear and to understand because it's true, right? Yeah, so don't just say, you know, put that money in there because we need it. Like, well, tell us about why you need it, or tell us what you've been going through, where this would make such a difference in your neighborhood or in your situation.
Sarah had a question early on about our tax receipts and how 60 something, 68, I think, percent of the city funding comes through the earnings tax. Is that normal? And why is that the case for Cincinnati? Ohio, sadly, it's the case in Ohio for a lot of cities. In a lot of places, the cities, municipalities receive more property taxes, or a higher percentage of the property tax bill, and maybe also get sales tax revenue. In Ohio, cities don't get any sales tax revenue. And because of the way we fund our schools, which is very badly, schools are 70% of your property tax bill goes to the school system because that's their only source of revenue. They don't get income tax. They don't get any other shit, very little shared state tax. Because of that, municipalities have to go big on the earnings tax. It's the only real option. Because property taxes are already so high due to the levies and schools that need them. It's their only option. It's not great in the long run, but it's the case for most of Ohio's municipalities. And outside of Ohio, it is much less common.
Hey, let's see. I think we saw one question. This might have to be the last one. Please ask John and Lauren to talk about finding money in various accounts where money has not been spent, but the account is dormant because the effort associated with the account is now finished. Why can't the city administration just clean out those accounts when projects, events, et cetera, are done?
So I can say, a lot of those accounts are restricted accounts. So when I was talking about how I was trying to find $35,000 from mortar, we actually found $35,000 in a clean and safe or restricted account. We were able to give that money to KCB and then take KCB out of the general fund and give $35,000 to mortar. So that's my experience. It's just they're restricted so they can only go to certain projects.
The other big chunk of those are old capital projects. I remember one year, Councilmember Silbach was the lead sponsor on the city's pedestrian safety fund. This was maybe four budgets ago that we started it with half a million dollars. It would specifically, this wasn't road money. This was pedestrian safety money. It was for improving crosswalks, for making it safer for everybody in our entire city to just walk across their street or walk on their street. We found money in an old capital project of rebuilding the Wald Vogel Viaduct, Lower Price Hill. It was like a $20 million project. It finished and there was like $600,000 left in the account. The answer of why it's still there, I mean, when you talk to budget, they'll say, you know, some of these funds, they have to hold on to for a few years in case if some vendor comes with a last minute bill. But if you're able to work it well and you know where these things are and you can be cautious about how much you need, you can possibly use it for another source. Again, it's really deep dive into old past year budgets, but it can be found, usually capital and restricted dollars.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much for your time. I feel like this has been one of the most informative hours in human history. So thank you so much. We will send out all of the slides. We are going to post them along with the recording of this video to our website. And we will link to all that in an email that you will get after the event tonight. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. And Hilly, feel free to pass along my contact info. I'm happy to answer more questions offline because I'm sure some folks have really specific ones. And again, thanks, everybody. It was really great to talk everybody through it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hey, I'm going to introduce our next speaker, who is Roshan Bliss from the big city of Denver. Roshan is a trainer, facilitator, mediator, community organizer, and strategic thinker with a passion for youth empowerment and a serious commitment to social change. His years as part of the staff at the National Coalition for Dialogue and Deliberation, combined with his graduate studies in conflict resolution, civic theory, participatory democracy, and collaborative governance at the University of Denver, focused, have helped him come to see dialogue, public engagement, and other forms of democratic deliberation as crucial mechanisms by which we can create shared visions and build toward a common future. Roshan currently uses his passion for empowering young people in his role as organizing director with a local youth empowerment organization called Project Voice, where his major work is teaching and supporting young people to use skills of community organizing to build change in their communities, including by helping implement Colorado's first ever student participatory budgeting process at the Alraria College. Thank you, college campus in 2018, and supporting a student coalition and passing a statewide law that would lower the voting age for school board to 16. And with that incredibly impressive bio, I'm going to pass you all over to Roshan.
Thanks so much, Hilly. And thanks, Action Tank, for inviting me. I'm really excited to be here. Like Hilly said, I do live in the big city of Denver. And I helped run an initiative, the first ever student-led participatory budgeting effort on a college campus here called Alraria a couple of years ago. And I'm here to talk tonight about participatory budgeting because it's all about money tonight. Am I okay to go ahead and start sharing my screen, Hilly?
Yep. Go right ahead.
Sorry for my cat loudly wanting to participate in our call. She may be joining us the whole night. Hello. So I'm going to go ahead. I've got a power, I've got a set of slides that I'm going to walk through. But I will also do what I can and Hilly and Ioana, I will, I would love to get your help just kind of monitoring the chat because I don't want to just talk at folks for the whole time. We'll certainly have time for questions and discussion later. But I want to encourage folks to jump in to the chats before the end as well. So, okay, trying to share my screen here. And are you all seeing my slides here?
Yep.
Great. And here comes, of course, an ambulance or a fire truck or something. Sorry for that. So we are going to dig into participatory budgeting 101 tonight, talking about dollars, democracy. I would love actually to see just a brief show of hands or yeses in the chat of who has actually heard of participatory budgeting before tonight. Maybe, oh, I realize I probably can't see the chat while I'm sharing my screen.
Roshan, I'll just jump in and say, I know a couple of people are here because they're interested in working on participatory budgeting in Cincinnati. So there's a lot of interest in your presence.
Great. Well, I'm excited to hear that. And that's my next question. You all have been together, but this is my first time with the City Hall or City Council School Nights. Who, what cities are represented tonight? Obviously Cincinnati. And I will say, I've got a lot of love for Ohio. This is actually where I was born. I was, I was born in Columbus and grew up for the first five years of my life in Westerville. So happy to be talking to some fellow Buckeyes. But what other cities are here?
At least one or two people signed up from the city of Columbus. And I noticed because they had columbus.gov email addresses. There might be a couple of others from outside the city, but it wasn't clear from the sign up.
Great. Well, you'll be invited to continue repping your city in the chat there because I'd love to know. But I'm excited to be talking to you all because participatory budgeting is absolutely a wonderful way to get everyday people involved in what is often a boring feeling, but critically important part of governing ourselves in the budget. So I'm excited to be talking about it. So like I said, Denver had a participatory budgeting process, actually a pair of participatory budgeting processes in 2018 to 2019. And they were kind of combined with an art project, all under the auspices of a local civic health organization called Worm Cookies of the Revolution. So there were actually two separate participatory budgeting processes that were run at the same time. The one in, and then one big Rube Goldberg-inspired art project that very much was meant to draw people in. And the whole project was known as This Machine Has A Soul. There's a bunch of metaphors about the machinery of governments and giving it a soul kind of used in that arts engagement piece. And the participatory budgeting process then benefited from all that engagement. So this is a much too complicated diagram of how it all worked. Like I said, Worm Cookies got the money from foundations, which will be an important thing we'll cover. But this is all just to point out and show that this is the part that I worked on. I was, back then, just an organizer with Project Voice. And I helped support the Alraria Participatory Budgeting, or PB, initiative at the campus. We spent $43,000 in combined grant money and some money given to us by one of the three universities that shares the Alraria campus. Spent that $43,000 with about 1,000 students voting on how to spend it, which was really, really exciting. And we, it was all a clever trap in many ways to entice the city of Denver to actually do participatory budgeting with real city dollars. And it was effective and successful. We are actually just about to launch here in Denver the first ever participatory budgeting process in our city with $1.7 million. It should be starting really anytime. We're actually kind of waiting to hear back a little bit more about when we're going to get going. So it's kind of coming, just say all that to say this is coming from a place of having done some of this and having been somewhat successful in using this kind of pilot experiments in participatory budgeting to move the city to do it for real. And we are just thrilled. That's right. So participatory, what? Participatory budgeting, also called PB because participatory budgeting is too many syllables to say over and over again. And so I'll be saying PB a lot. But as many of you know, PB is a democratic process where community members, residents of a given city, municipality, or members of an organization, or university, or campuses, we'll talk about, directly decide how to spend part of a public budget or a shared budget. Participatory where? So this is a map actually from the website of the Participatory Budgeting Project, a really wonderful nonprofit organization that is one of the leading kind of technical assistance organizations for PB in the country. This is a map of the many, many places in the United States, Canada, and the Caribbean that have done participatory budgeting in the last decade or so. And this actually, this map could be bigger because PB is global. There are just about 1,000 cities across the world that have used some form of participatory budgeting to engage citizens in how they want their money spent, which is really exciting. And we hope that that map just keeps getting denser with those dots. Just to give a kind of high-level view, there have been in the US and Canada, where I know of research and have access to those numbers, there has been about $300 million in public funding allocated through some form of PB in the last decade. And I feel uncertain that these number, I think that these numbers may be actually higher at this point because I think these numbers might be one, maybe two years old. But about over 400,000 people have participated in PB. And it's funded over 1,600 individual community-generated projects that actually happened in communities, which is really exciting for our democracy. So how does it work? It is complicated but simple. And I am going to go into more detail, but the best way is really like, let me just show you the video that the Participatory Budgeting Project has made to kind of help folks, very much like you, introduce the idea of PB. It's about three, maybe four minutes long. Hopefully, the website cooperates. Yes, great. Four minutes long. And let me make sure that you can hear it. Ioana, give me a thumbs up if you can hear this.
We can't hear it yet. Hey, Roshan, we can't hear it.
Oh, no, really? Aw, man.
It looks, it looks good.
I'm sorry. I thought I saw your thumb a moment ago. I'm not sure how to fix that.
Did you, when you wanted to share your screen, did you click the button that said, share audio?
I did not see a button, but let me stop it and start it. Try again. I'll share the whole, let's go check out the advanced. I see a music computer sound only.
You don't, you don't see a share sound?
I do see a share sound. Oh, okay, great.
Awesome. We did it.
Let's try that again. How about? Can you? Who knows better? Okay, we'll start over. Sorry about that.
All right, if you live in this community and you pay taxes, come out and vote. Decide how your tax dollars get spent.
Participatory budgeting gives people real power over real money to make the decisions that affect their lives. It's a democratic process in which ordinary community members directly decide how this spends part of the public budget.
Oh, this is different because you're actually voting for where the money is going to be spent instead of allowing them to decide where to spend the money.
Who knows better about their community than the people that live in their community?
Do not be afraid of the big words participatory budgeting. It sounds boring, but it's the opposite of that.
So how does it work? First, people brainstorm ideas. They come together in meetings and assemblies and start to think of what kinds of projects they would like to see in their neighborhood.
We had to think big. We have a million dollars that we could use so we can fund parks, health issues, streets.
Volunteers work with experts to turn people's initial ideas into full project proposals.
We started, we made about 40 projects. And so we had a series of budget delegate meetings and we narrowed down the list into about four or five projects.
We met with the Parks Department and we talked about what we wanted to see change in some of the parks and how we were going to work with them.
What are the real needs in the community? If you only have a certain amount of money, what is it that you can do that's going to benefit as many people as possible?
I'm dreaming of new benches, modern benches. Seniors have nowhere to go.
Displays at bus shelters throughout the district and it will tell people when the next bus is due to arrive.
We're asking for a projector and 30 Mac laptops.
State of the art fitness center.
They put solar panels on a firehouse.
After volunteers share the top projects, the community gets ready to vote.
It's a way of validating every voice in our community and saying, you know what, whatever your position is, you live in our community, you have a right to decide. And that me as a representative and government should respond and should listen to that voice. Anybody could vote in this process, immigrants, whether you're documented or not, young people that normally don't get to vote.
Most people, they don't even know that, 16 year olds can come out here and vote today. Some of them are really surprised. They said, really? I said, yes. They have a voice.
The projects with the most votes get funded.
The Red Hook Library Community Garden, right here.
The projects are then implemented over the next few years. And the following year, the process starts again. People brainstorm new ideas, turn them into new projects, vote on them, and fund more improvements for their community. PB becomes part of the budget process. It becomes a new way of governing.
I think this is like the greatest wave of democracy coming into the United States. It started in Porto Alegre, Brazil in 1989.
From there, it spread all over Latin America to over 1,500 cities around the world. In Toronto, public housing tenants have decided how to spend millions of dollars on improvements to their buildings. City council members in Chicago, New York, and other cities have engaged thousands of residents in allocating discretionary funds. Entire cities have launched PB, such as in Vallejo, California for funds from a sales tax, and in Boston for youth funds. Even schools and universities have used PB.
This was a great opportunity for you to be a part of government and better the city you live in. Who wouldn't want to take advantage of that?
You're creating a more educated platform of voters overall. So I think this can only be good for the big project of democracy.
I love that video. As just a good way to show how the big picture looks when we do PB well. And you could hear and see in the faces of the people featured in that video that they're excited. You know, they are really stoked to be part of that work and it's a big deal for them. Because a lot of times, people feel really disconnected from the ways that their tax dollars are spent and the types of decisions that are made about what goes on in their community. So it's a wonderful way to put that power directly into everyday people's hands. So the process, what does participatory budgeting actually look like from beginning to end? We'll go into more depth in, in all of this, but this little graphic here shows you the kind of positive feedback loop that these projects, that the PB process works and functions on. So we start up in the top left with the design. This is done by a steering committee of regular folks from the communities or cities that are going to be part of PB. That steering committee becomes the kind of guiding body of the whole PB process. And that group of people decides on the rules for how the PB process is going to work, kind of, is there going to be a maximum or a minimum amount of money that a project muster must, must not cost? Who can vote? Who's eligible? And they plan out also a bunch of the stages that come later as the kind of plan of action for how the whole process will run. So that design process is where we start and that's often supported by, but not directed, you know, in entirely by city staff, like many of you. And then, once the process has been designed, there are things in place and the process has kind of started being advertised in the community, which we'll talk about. We start moving to the brainstorming phase. This is where we just generate ideas from as many people as we can get a hold of. Before COVID, a lot of PB processes involved in-person idea assemblies, quote unquote, where folks would come together in person and it often kind of feels like a town hall or public forum. But folks are kind of, instead of listening to somebody from the city at the front for the whole time, they might get the kind of intro or presentation, see a video like the one you just saw about what PB is, but then they're kind of turned to each other and told and supported to talk amongst themselves in small groups to create just a brainstorm of all the different ways that they would like to spend the amount of money that is on offer in the PB process. So there will often be several of these, these meetings. Sometimes there's ideas submitted online, which is an obviously really is increasingly essential way to do things in this COVID world. And folks kind of discuss and refine those ideas together so that they kind of get the best possible shot at forming something that, that we already know there's interest in from the various communities. So after a few months of collecting ideas or a few weeks, depends, we'll talk about timelines and it just depends on kind of what's going on in your city. But after the brainstorming phase is over and we've collected as many ideas as we can, then the proposal development phase begins. And this is really where we get a hardcore set of people from the community to engage in what's called the Budget Delegate Committee, which is really a way of saying, the folks who take the ideas and vet them and sort of shape them into concrete proposals with price tags that we know are accurate. And that is almost always assisted by city staffers. You saw a few of the, the kids who did the park ideas. They went, they went and actually talked to the Parks and Rec departments and, you know, had several meetings and got them to help them understand what the price, what the price points of the various ideas they had for their parks would cost so that they could turn those just raw ideas into a proposal with a plan and a, and a budget that could then make it onto the ballot. And there's often many, there's often several budget delegate committee committees in one process. They're usually segmented out into a kind of category of spending. So there's often like a transit committee, a parks committee, a youth committee, just that type of way to categorize and clump the ideas that are similar and relevant to each other so that you're not kind of all over the place in one committee. So this takes a while and there's usually kind of a couple rounds of the budget estimates happening. But once the proposals are developed and finalized and it feels like we know concretely what the budget is and what the proposal is going to entail, then those proposals that are finalized are turned into a ballot and then it's time to vote. And the voting is one of the most fun and exciting and interesting parts of the PB process. And again, it goes back to the design process. You've determined already who's allowed to vote and what the kind of eligibility criteria will be, often a timeframe. And this is then when folks from the budget delegate committees, the steering committee, and often city staff as well, do a kind of get out the vote efforts to try to get as many people who are from the area that's, you know, that's eligible, from the groups that are eligible, to actually show up in person. Often it's supported by secretaries of state or city, city and county clerks who use real ballot mechanisms and machinery for regular elections to support the vote. But it also can be an online ballot. And sometimes it's just, you know, printed papers that were run off at Kinko's and it happens in a school gym. But the voting happens over again a period of time. It's not just a one day or one, one, you know, meeting event. And then once the votes are tallied and you get to see who's, who, which, which groups are, which projects won. And those projects then get the funding and the projects are implemented by the city and then enjoyed and benefited from, by the community. So this is the big picture. And then of course, after the, after the, the winning project, you go back to the design process, hopefully, because folks have, in the city and in, both in the, on the city staff and agency side, and in the public, have seen the benefits of the PB process and want to engage in, in the next round. And it can become just a regular part of the budget cycle. And so once the funding has been allocated, decided, things get moving and implementation, you just go right back to just redesigning the process, seeing what you could do better, how you could be more inclusive, changing dollar amounts sometimes shifts things and you go back to brainstorming and the whole thing starts over again. So that is the high level of how the PB process works. I'll pause here just to see if there's any questions and I'll ask Kili and Ioana. I can't see folks, so if you can help me kind of field any if they, if they come up. But yeah, I just want to make sure we were pausing to make sure people get the big picture. What kind of questions do you have so far?
We have a couple of questions in the chat. Ellen, Ellen Vera, do you want to ask your question? She had a few questions in a row.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah. So one question I had was just, how is Denver organized? Are you all, like, is it divided up into wards or neighborhoods? Kind of, what's the structure in terms of kind of how you're trying to get votes? Like for example, in Cincinnati, we have 52 neighborhoods. So sometimes that feels a little daunting when it's like, okay, we want to get participation from all of those neighborhoods.
Yeah, great question. And this is different community to community. It's kind of a matter of what logistically makes sense, organizationally and kind of infrastructure capacity wise, how can you make it work? Here in Denver, like I said, the project has just, or the PB process has not actually begun. The money has been allocated and set aside for this is, we're doing PB with this money. But it's still actually in such an early phase that we haven't even formed the steering committee and made those decisions. And interestingly, the PB process here is a, is a kind of phase two of a pilot. So it is only going, that $1.7 million is only going to be spent, it's going to be divided into three different sections of the city. So Denver is organized by city council districts often. There are 11, 11 city council districts. And it's basically three city council districts and there, there are, there's probably going to be some like kind of, there will be porous borders. There's neighborhoods that, you know, we have also some scores of different, you know, neighborhoods that have their own identities and people would say, I live here and not there. And there are some overlap between the neighborhoods and the council district and sometimes they're not contiguous. But there are three kind of designated geographic areas that the city of Denver has decided to start the spending in. And all three of them have some level of kind of lower economic, socioeconomic status folks in their neighborhoods. They're just the areas of town where there's a lot more black and brown folks, immigrants, people who don't make as much money, which is a good thing in many ways, because as we know, especially you all as folks who work in city, you know that people with more money tend to have more of a voice, more time to go to the city council meeting, more time to, you know, spend an evening or an afternoon lobbying their city council person, what have you, than working people. So right now in Denver, the plan is to have that $1.7 million actually kind of divided among these three separate areas. And those three areas will have their own processes. They'll all have ideas and vote on just their, their area. And they'll divide that pool of money. Complicatedly, there will be a fourth citywide sort of pot of money that's just for transit projects that anyone from the city, as I understand it, will be able to vote in. And that'll be a smaller part of the money than the other three neighborhoods get. So that's Denver specifically. But you know, you can look at a place like New York, where a lot of that video you just saw was shot. And it is run by their city council people. And they're basically, it's a sort of city council district by city council district process where District 13, for example, will just have a budget already. And there will be X amount of dollars that residents of that district get to vote on and spend. And then it starts again. But it can, it can be changed out, changed up and made to make sense and be applicable and practicable in your city. So there are no kind of like rules that are hard and fast on that front.
Do you have any good examples? Because all of our city council members are elected at large, so it's the entire citywide. I'm trying to think of any, because I'm just trying to think of like how we would divide it up, except for that 52 cities, which feels a little bit unwieldy.
I, I don't have off the top of my head, good examples that I'm familiar enough with. You know, I, we, we did it here on the campus of Araria that had three different schools and students from all three of those schools could participate. And then we did it, the second process that happened in our PB pilot that Warm Cookies supported was in one specific neighborhood called Cole. And so it really would just have to be a discussion internally with your city leaders and maybe hopefully some residents about what makes sense. Maybe it's that, you know, there are chunks of the city where even though the northeast corner, you know, has seven different neighborhoods, that those seven neighborhoods could be kind of clustered into one PB pot of money and that there could be a different cluster in the central area that's nine different neighborhoods that are all participating in one process. But it could also be that you have one that's just the whole city. You know, there's one huge pot of money and you try to make sure that there's representation from as much of the city as possible. But it unfortunately, I don't have any like concrete examples, but a theme of this presentation you'll see is that you can go to participatorybudgeting.org. That's the Participatory Budgeting Projects website and they have tons of information tools and they do technical consulting with city staff and agencies and will help you walk through, they do trainings and they'll help you walk through those types of things. So that's a place where you could get more support thinking through how to divide up and those 52 neighborhoods and what to do with your process specifically. Good questions though, important ones to start thinking about. Take one or two more questions that are already here at this time.
Sure. We have, we have a comment and then two questions. The comment is from Kevin Marsh. I like this PB approach to budgeting. All we have today in Cincinnati is the Neighborhood Support Program process whereby each community council gets a little bit of money and all residents in that neighborhood vote on how to spend it. We have a question from T. Wills that says, if you don't mind, can you give us a few examples of the voting eligibility criteria? And the last question is from Sean Pratt. Are the individual projects often different costs within a vote? Are there examples of how the voting works out to allocate funding between the winning projects that vary in cost?
Good questions. So to start with the voting eligibility, that's often about residents, where you live. And, you know, especially for cities that have multiple processes, it kind of depends on your address or your zip code of which, which pot of money gets voted on. But other criteria are often, often age is one of the biggest criteria. A lot, a lot, a lot of PB processes involve and engage people intentionally A lot, a lot, a lot of PB processes involve and engage people intentionally who are under eighteen. Who generally can't vote on anything else, but absolutely are parts of the community. And so there have been PB processes, I believe as young as twelve, you were allowed to vote. And that's just kind of a question that each steering committee needs to answer for itself. But it also is often, as you heard in the video, a question about, you know, residency versus citizenship. There are many, lots of PB processes. Cities have decided that they want to engage folks who are not citizens, who couldn't vote in any other election. But get them engaged in their neighborhoods and their, their cities by having those folks be eligible to vote as well. So that's kind of what we mean by eligibility. And often an important thing to think about is folks who work for the city or especially like city council elected officials, sometimes are not eligible to vote. They get plenty of say in other spaces. And so sometimes that's another kind of criteria that's used. And as for the question about individual projects and the cost, yes, definitely. Like it's not that every project costs thirty thousand dollars and that's it. It's, you know, one will be thirty thousand, one will be fifty, a hundred seventeen, you know, whatever. They'll just be, it'll just cost how much it costs, whatever that project is. And sometimes there is a kind of, you must, it can't be a project less than five thousand dollars. Because that's just then kind of too little. Or, you know, we, we're not going to give you more than twenty-five percent of the pot. So if you've got a hundred, if you've got a million dollars, you can't make a budget idea or proposal over two hundred fifty thousand or something like that. And then what happens in, and it's again, up to the rules committee, the steering committee in lots of ways. But often what happens is that the projects that win, they get the most votes, will just kind of get the first bite at the funds. And, and then you just kind of go down the line of winningest or vote-gettingest projects until you're out of money. So it might be that, you know, the first five projects, they got the top votes, you know, empty the bank. Or it could be that only two can be funded with the, the amount of money. Or that there's three and like, there's only partial funding for the fourth one. And sometimes cities or, or areas that do PB will try to figure out a way to find the extra supplemental money. To finally, to fully fund that fourth project, or they'll try to do partial implementation. It's again, up to that specific city and part, you know, this decisions about the steering committee. All good questions though, and we're going to keep getting more into it. I'm just shocked to see that it's already six forty my time on the mountain, so we're going to keep moving. So why do PB? I mean, there's a ton of really good reasons, but obviously it's about democracy and putting our money where our mouth is. You kind of can't not use that pun if you do PB, it's kind of a rule. But it's also about increasing local levels of civic engagements. A lot of times it's used as a way to kind of spur interest in other parts of government. And there have been studies that have shown that play, that cities that do participatory budgeting see increased levels of involvement in other areas of governments. So if you really want more people to be paying attention to what's going on in parks and rec, you might do PB. And then get that kind of outcome. It gives people a real sense of ownership. I mean, I think this part's pretty obvious, but also really important. Because so often folks feel so disconnected and like they have no say over what, what goes on. And this, this is a really helpful way to, to make that happen. And very relevant for these days, PB can sometimes restore or increase the level of trust in governments that folks have. Because often that is in short supply. I mean, I don't have to tell you folks that there's a lot of good reasons that folks have problems trusting what the government is up to or what specific politicians are doing. A really important part of why to do PB in your city is also about increasing the level of equity in your city. As you could hear in the video and like we discussed with the eligibility criteria. PB is a really wonderful way to share power, real power with people who are often excluded from participating. Whether it's because they're not citizens or it's because they are not able to make the city council meetings. So they're working, they're taking care of their kids. And this is a way to reach into communities and really actually invite people to be part of decision-making that genuinely affects them. And that's just kind of can't be overstated how important that can be for a city. So these are just a few reasons, but a really important question for you to ask yourselves before you start PB is, does your city actually want these things? I imagine that everyone here, because you're here, you want these things. But there's real questions about whether the administration that's in control of your city or town wants more engagements. Or if they're just fine with the way things are. A lot of folks in governments have, start to kind of squirm when more people show up and want to have a say in democratic processes. And it's just a question to really consider of not just, you know, do. It's really a way of asking, where would the barriers come from to even get started on this kind of process? It's a really important question for you to consider if you want to advocate for PB in your, in your city. Where will the resistance come from and how will you overcome it? Because not everybody, unfortunately, who winds up in government is really into civic engagement, democracy, equity, et cetera. So where does the money come from? This is one of the more interesting and creative questions for PB processes. So obviously, city budgets are a huge source of PB. This is often, it's, it can be from any discretionary spot of money. Very, very infrequently are city ordinance is so restrictive that you need to change a law to make PB possible. It's just kind of whoever is allowed to make the decisions about how a specific pot of money is spent. Could decide that that money is going to be spent via participatory budgeting. And it's usually from whatever major discretionary fund a city has access to. But you could use it from kind of any pot of money. Often it comes from capital budgets, but not always. And I am here to say, I hate it when it's just capital funds. And I want to recommend from my personal perspective, that you try to make more than just capital funds available. Because if a lot of folks who are engaging and thinking about how they want to spend their money, their tax dollars. Would want to have a program, a, you know, new service. And if you are limited to capital budgets and you can only build physical stuff that you can touch or, or, you know, install on a street or, or something. It really limits people and it can often foster disappointment. And kind of a level of like, see, I told you, they would never listen to us vibes from people who are already jaded on government. It's understandable, sometimes capital budgets are just kind of what you got to work with. And it's certainly not a reason to not do PB. But just, I'm here to tell you, it's better if you don't have to build physical things. And you can get folks thinking about program services, et cetera, as well. But then outside of that, you can do PB with an organizational budget. There are several organizations, large kind of think, you know, YMCA or a membership organization. Of a kind of grassroots advocacy type group. And in fact, the participatory budgeting project itself does PB with money that it raises from donations. And, you know, Walmart could do PB with its employees if it wanted to. I'm not holding my breath, but any, any amount of money can, or any budget can be, PB can be applied. So an organization or a company could do PB. Obviously colleges, universities, schools, the Phoenix School District actually does a district-wide school PB process with its students. Has done that for the last three, maybe four years now. It's really exciting and cool stuff. We did it with a couple of universities here in Denver. Several schools in, in New York have done it with their university budgets, really cool possibilities. Grant funding is rare, but also possible. That is what actually happened with our pilot here in Denver. We got a set of grants, Worm Cookies and the kind of constellation of the coalition of groups that ended up implementing that this machine has a sole project. We got money from foundations and then turned that money around and, and opened it up to the community and did PB with it. So that's a possibility. And fundraising, you could just raise money to do PB with, you know, any, with your group of friends, with an organization, with a neighborhood organization. That type of thing, it, it really just any, again, any, any budget can be used via PB. It's just kind of up to you and up to our creativity. So, oh, this slide, there we go. So how much is enough? So there is a kind of rule of thumb that PPP, the Participatory Budgeting Project has put out, which is it, that it should be at least one percent and up to fifteen percent of a given municipal budget. And their kind of rule of thumb is that it should be about a million dollars per one hundred thousand residents. It is, you know, kind of a waste of a lot of people's time. If you give a hundred thousand people thirty grand or something to spend, like that's just, many of you know that it's regular people would be really surprised at how expensive just installing a bench in a park would be. And so it really does need to be a substantial and, and serious amount of money for it to kind of take hold. And it's just important to think about what percentage of the budget you can really do this with. The research being done on, on North American Participatory Budgeting shows that the average per person, per resident allocation is about nine dollars eighty-five cents. So that works out to just under a million dollars per a hundred thousand people. And it has been as high, I think, with the highest per residence number was something like forty-nine dollars. And again, this is not like how much money they have to vote with. This is just how much that budget that's made available to PB works out to. And it's also really important to, to note that there, you can have a kind of million dollars for spending on PB from the public to vote on. But that there will also be implementation costs in addition to that, that you need to factor in. Support staff in the city, you know, helping convene the steering committee, buy food for them, doing printing, translation, all the outreach. And very importantly, stipends for the everyday people who take on important time-consuming roles to help make PB go. That's a really important equity piece. And also it's just practical, it's really hard to get regular people to spend hours in meetings if you're not giving them a little stipend, a hundred bucks a month or something. So think about those implementation costs. So that if you had a million dollar budget per se, for example, you might want to think about another hundred thousand dollars of implementation, two hundred thousand dollars. On, in addition to that million dollars to make sure that the PB process goes smoothly, is effective, reaches all the people, has, you know, translated in Spanish and English. Or whatever, whatever other languages are spoken in your, your area. So who participates and how is an important set of questions. So this, there, this slide is about the public and then the next slide's about city staffers, folks like you. So like we've said, the, the regular everyday residents of your city or town can be part of the steering committee. Is a really critically important role. Like we said, it makes the rules, decides eligibility criteria for both voters and projects. And designs the process and then also helps kind of continue to steer the process as it goes. These people are really critical, they become heavy lifting people in the process. We turn to them a lot in our processes here in Denver. And we gave them a real stipend for our students. And the, the university process we did, I think their stipend for a semester-long engagement as a steering committee member was like a thousand dollars. And so that's like, what, three hundred something a month? So the steering committee is a really important role that people from the public can play. Obviously idea generation, these are the things that this people attend these idea, these idea assemblies, they submit their ideas online. They, you know, talk to residents and kind of work out what we'd like to see in our neighborhood type stuff. It's a really important role that regular people play. And another critical role is that the public will be, you'll need residents of your city or town to be parts of budget delegate committees. And like we said, these are the committees that really take the raw brainstormed ideas and sift through the ones that are practicable. And, you know, feasible and throw out the ones that aren't. And then do the work of talking to city staff or agencies about how much it would cost to put that bench in this place. Or to have this youth center built or launch that new program. They spend a lot of time in the center of the, the, the process, really doing the work of turning the ideas into real concrete projects with a price tag. Really important set of people that you'll also need to recruit to be budget delegates. And then people vote, regular, everyday people vote. But then also importantly, a lot of those regular residents will be part of your outreach team. That, you know, PB needs to, the idea, the idea and the fact that this is happening. And how to get engaged is often a word of mouth sort of proposal. And you'll need help from your residents to spread the word. As you know, you know, city agencies or, or the, the city hall can promote things until they're blue in the face. And still have a lot of people say, we never heard it, how about it happening? So it's really important to engage regular people in the outreach too. So I'll go through this slide and then we'll pause again for questions. So what role do city staff play in PB? Many and important ones. So you all will often be the type of people who helped launch the process. There's often advocacy kind of behind the scenes before anyone in the public even knows what PB is, to secure a real budget for it. There are, you know, often, and the city of Denver is doing this, you know, there's an RFP kind of put out for contractors to help manage the process, to help, you know, support or facilitate the steering committee to guide the budget delegate committees. You might need people to do translating, you just have to kind of put those background pieces in place often before the project even kind of gets announced and input in place or gotten rolling. Staff of cities, city agencies are often going to be the ones directly supporting the steering committee and the budget delegate committees. They'll be helping do the doodle polls, securing the rooms, getting the food or the meals that are needed. And also helping, we had our, you know, structuring agreements. And by that, I mean, you know, we had steering committee members and budget delegate committees members like sign a, a short and like not to just super scary. But it was a contract where it's like, we're going to pay you this money and you're going to need to do this. And that you might be the type of person who writes that and distributes the stipends, that type of stuff. Just help facilitate those meetings, take the notes, send them out, that type of thing. It's definitely an important role that city staff can and do play. Facilitating the process in general, finding and securing the, you know, school gym or, you know, veterans, Foreign Wars Hall. Space for the idea assembly. Working with, you know, if you're going to engage, which is a really cool way to do it, you know, your local elections group or administration to actually use real polling equipments for the voting, you need to, you guys would probably be the ones doing that. If there's a, there's, it's really helpful to have a website for your local PB process. And city staff might build that, they might do all the documentation of the process for evaluation sake. That type of thing is also an important role that city staff play. Critically, you all and the city agencies know what things cost and how much, you know, needs to be padded for overruns and that type of thing. So really important to provide cost estimates, to actually price out the project proposals. And then the implementation, just get it done. I mean, this is not a thing we're going to ask then, we're not going to ask regular people to then come install the bus benches or, you know, the new park equipment or whatever it is. So this is what city staff often end up doing. Let me pause here again to see what kind of questions are coming up now. Let me see if I can actually see the chat.
So the biggest one was from me and Ellen Vera. Ellen, I think, asked it the best way. She said, do you have an example budget for the operations of implementing the PB process that you could share?
I can share the, the, the kind of budget that we use for the Arieri Participatory Budgeting Project. It's obviously going to be way smaller probably than what a real city like yours would do. But that's also the type of thing that I'm pretty positive you can find that on the participatorybudgeting.org website. They have so many things that you can download and these are, you know, they've been doing this for over a decade. And this question comes up a lot. I, I would be shocked if there were not example operations budgets from big cities like New York or Vallejo that also did it. And if you want to see our, you know, small forty-three, the implementation budget for our forty-three grand process we give to students. I could probably find that and send it to Hillary and Joanna.
That would, that would be terrific because we're kind of thinking about doing a pilot project, just to like test proof of concept here.
And then I see you, you asked how many staff people per million dollars? That's a great question. That's a great question that, again, is gonna just depend on your location, the, you know, way that your government is structured and the capacity given, you know, some people do. You know, there's a whole office that runs PB in New York. But, you know, it's sounding like here in Denver, there might be like one or two or like 0.85 FTE, like two of those types of people who are kind of advising and supporting then the engagement firm that runs the process. And it really, that stuff just really, really depends. And I see then, one more question I figured out in chat. The, have you found the, what the standard participation rate of voters in a community is needed to reconsider successful implementation of PB? In terms of now even people behind through the lens of race, gender, geography, et cetera. Short answer is no. I don't know a number that's like, you have to have this many percentage of people join or participate or vote to be successful. That's again, just kind of gonna be a question of what standard for your, you know, city, like what's your voting, what's your election participation rate? You know, how many people generally come to city council meetings or write to their city councillors in a given year? And try to get above that, you know, I think would be a good kind of rule of thumb, but I don't know of any numbers that are like, this is the the bar to be considered successful. I think it's just doing better than whatever the rate of participation in general is in your city is gonna be a good way to start, though. Great. So we'll keep moving. Oh, wow, it's already almost an hour. I don't have tons. I was gonna talk about the role of art. I can show you all the video, but Joanna, you tell me, what should we do with this last few minutes?
And I personally would love to see what you have about the role of art. So just go for it. Okay.
Okay, I will. The video is like two minutes, and I'll show you, and it's gonna do a better job explaining it than I could by just talking and probably shorter. So we'll watch this video. I'll say a few more words, and then that's that's almost it. I've got a pitfall slide that I want to show you.
This machine has a soul. Does this machine have a soul? Do you, machine, have a soul? Human, when you become machine, will you have a soul?
The neighborhood is alive. You can see it in the backyard as the grill smoke competes with the clouds. First dates around the block that somehow lead to vows. Church on the front porch as the elders preach life to the streets. Sermons of how to inherit the earth taught to the Meakin house.
The health of a community largely is about how empowered people feel to engage in their local government, how empowered they feel as citizens to make decisions that affect their life. With participatory budgeting, what we do is we place power in people's hands. People will make decisions based on the value systems that have been cultivated through family, through the institutions that they're a part of. What you do when you give people power is you give them the chance to keep alive traditions, values, culture, identity. You don't just relegate these decisions to very simple mechanical cost benefit analyses that don't take any of those values or cultures or identities into account.
Humans hiding in the ghosts of the machine. Do you want more? Do you want more? Do we want more? This machine has a soul.
So there's a bunch more video and interesting stuff on the This Machine Has A Soul website. You just Google This Machine Has A Soul and it'll be the first thing that pops up. These are just the pictures of, essentially what you saw was there was a woman who, one of the women who was speaking in there, Candy State Abaca, actually ended up becoming a city council person. She basically gave her backyard and this like garage that she has on her property over to artists who were convened and recruited by Worm Cookies of the Revolution, who turned the whole garage into this big art project and also a huge Rube Goldberg machine. Again, the sort of metaphor of like machinery of governments having, getting, having a soul, getting a soul, us being soul. And what you saw was just there was like a couple of different times where people were, it was like a big exhibit. And there's a bunch of information about PB, also about the community where it was, where that that art exhibit was resting. And it basically was, it's the sort of first idea idea assembly. And people were able to, you know, they heard a bunch about PB and the presentations. There was food, there was poetry, so much poetry. And there, and people were kind of encouraged to think about how would they start spending this money? And this, and you know, this is also a picture of the ballot that was designed by a professional designer, you know, to make to make look beautiful and be interesting and enticing to just engage with and also made to look like a real ballot. So it's just the the idea that there's a lot of ways you can use arts. I'm gonna kind of go faster here. But you can engage with people who normally wouldn't show up because there's art involved. We had a magician come to our on-campus event, was one of our, you know, idea assemblies. There was a magic show while we were also talking about ways that we spend money on on campus. You know, you can have visual art, you can have dance, you can have poetry, you can have magicians, you can get creative of whatever kind of culture you infuse is gonna help deepen the process for people. And it's just strongly recommended because a lot of people, even though you say, no, 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 it's not scary, trust us, they hear the word budgeting and their eyes glaze over. And they just like, can't hear anything else you said. So if you say there will be magic, there will be, you know, graffiti, there will be interesting toys and machines that you can play with, like then they might show up and like tolerate you talking to them about the budget. And a really interesting example from, again, PPP, that in New York, there was a theater of the oppressed troupe. Theater of the Oppressed, this really interesting, like engaging, immersive theater acting modality. They use Theater of the Oppressed to help people generate ideas for different situations in their community that needed solving. So there's a lot of really interesting and cool ways to use art that engage bigger parts of the community. You know, if you've got an arts district or if you've got an arts commission, it's a really great way to get those folks engaged who often would, you know, be on the sidelines of a lot of other important types of conversations. And it's, we, there are so many artists, you know, who are Denver has a lot of public art and a lot of really amazing artists of all kinds, and they wouldn't ever be caught dead in a budgeting meeting for the most part. But they were central parts of the Participatory Budgeting Processes that we started with with This Machine As A Soul. So that's a word on art. Last few things I'll say, there's some ways to mess this up that you should not do. Not being fair or transparent. Transparency is gonna be a huge part of just helping people really understand, answer their questions, don't hide things. Don't change the numbers, you know, of how much is available or not. Because that'll harm trust in local government. Try as much as you can, again, to not have limited spending options. If they really want a program and they can only build a thing that you can touch, people are gonna be turned off and be like, you know, whatever. So try to make flexible as much as you can the money. Inaccessibility of all kinds. If if your folks in this neighborhood are, you know, Spanish-only speakers or they speak Mong, you know, and your ballots are not in that language, guess who's not voting? Really clear stuff. And then there's also just, again, think about the politics of your local town. Not everyone's a fan of public of public participation and their political agendas, people trying to make a point or, you know, score points that can get in the way. So consider how you'll make sure to avoid that type of stuff becoming a problem. And with that, there's these, there's all these resources. Again, I I learned from the Participatory Budgeting Project. I was trained years ago to do PB from them. They were important supporters of the This Machine As A Soul project. They're still, you know, engaged in the Denver process, and their website is a treasure trove of manuals, resources, toolkits. They have a PB scoping tool, which is a very important thing. They do research and evaluation. There's a text platform they've created. You should really go to ParticipatoryBudgeting.org if you hear nothing else I said, and you want to know more about PB, you should do that. And with that, it's really just time for questions and discussions. So I'll just stop sharing my screen and apologize for being seven minutes over and see, Joanna and Hillary, do we have time for more questions? I can stay around. But sorry for going over a little bit.
We can probably take a couple if people have any real fast, but if people want to go, we understand.
If you have to go, have a good night. Thanks for listening and good luck. But if you want to stay around a little bit longer, I'll stick around and answer some more questions.
This has been really great.
Awesome. Glad to hear that. Any questions? I'm happy to take a few, if you want to drop in the chat or just come off of mute. Great. I was crystal clear and conveyed all of the ideas effectively.
It was really fascinating and really inspiring for those of us who are, have been dreaming about doing PB in Cincinnati for over a year now. So thank you so much. This is the first time I've I've heard your full presentation, and I learned a ton.
Excellent. Well, I'm really glad to hear that. I just dropped the link to This Machine As A Soul in the the chat, so you can visit the website. There's like six more videos, there's pictures. And there's a little bit more about the two separate processes we ran. So please visit that if you're interested in the art piece. And I guess with that, it'll be time to say goodnight.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for inviting me. This was fun. I was excited to do it.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, y'all. Good luck. Godspeed.